...meeting for March 29th, 2017. At this time, I'd ask everyone present to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing after for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, we received notification of the passing of Scott Stone and Michael McCarthy, either current or former residents of Dayton.
Thank you, Selectman Gula. Yes, Mr. Stone is survived by his wife Barbara. They both lived in Dayton for almost two decades or over two decades. And Mr. Stone is survived by his son Sam and daughter Anna, both students at Dayton Rehoboth. And Mr. McCarthy is a longtime Dayton resident. Most people will remember him for his humor and his wit. He was living in Revere at the time of his passing, but those who know Michael know that he never stopped saying he wanted to move back to Dayton. So what I wanted to say to Michael's friends and family is that, Michael, you never left Dayton. You'll always be a part of our town, and the people here remember you with only fondness. So at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence. So up first, we have a presentation by Antonio Almeida regarding modification to Hunter's Hill subdivision. And at this time, I would like to recognize our building commissioner, Mr. James Aguiar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Aguiar, excuse me just a minute. For the viewers at home, Chairman Cronin is ill, and we don't expect to see him the rest of the week. So the procedure is that the clerk of the board assumes chairmanship. So Mr. Zagrafis will be chairman for the evening.
If you feel better, Mr. Cronin.
Yes, thank you, Selectman. Thank you, people. I am disappointed that Chairman Cronin can't be here tonight, but I'm sure he'll watch the presentation and the meeting at home. For everyone at home, we know Hunter's Hill subdivision, its location, it's been one that's been ongoing for many, many years. It's gone through a couple of different owners, a couple of different project managers, et cetera, et cetera. The current owner of Hunter's Hill subdivision approached me approximately two weeks ago and wanted to know if the town would be interested in a change at the location. A change that is twofold. One, that would encompass modifying the comprehensive permit or conservation subdivision that was originally approved, and one that would be an entirely new permit. And I don't want to delve into too much of the details. I'm going to defer to the professionals on that. But I would like to say that from what I do know about it, and I'm here to learn just like you are, it may be an opportunity for Dayton to either open or close doors on a few items that have both helped and hindered us in the past. So I just ask that you look at this with a fresh set of eyes. The owner of this subdivision has been very forthright with the town. Brought the taxes current, came to me, wanted to meet with the Selectman and do this presentation at a Selectman's meeting so that he was open and transparent, and everyone at home could see. So with that, I would ask Mr. Olivera to come up. I'm sorry, Mr. Almeida to come up.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Antonio Almeida. I live at 96 Narrows Road in Sonora, Mass. I do own the place, Hunter's Hill in Dayton, Mass. I propose to the board members that it -- yeah, a little slower reading. I propose for the board members that this would benefit the community. This would consist of a 250-unit assisted living facility at Hunter's Hill Settlement in Dayton. It would have its own private ambulance service, create lots of jobs, and tax revenue. Easy access to William Street. Now I give you over to my engineer. She knows more about this project. Thank you.
Good evening, Selectman.
Good evening.
Members of the audience, those at home. My name is Sue Ann Santos, and I'm an engineer with Insight Engineering. And we are the project engineers for the site as it is now. What Mr. -- we are proposing at this site is, as described, is a 225 continuing care retirement community. Typically, as you may know, we have assisted living, we have memory care, and we have independent living. There's three different substructures of the building. Memory care is typically Alzheimer's, and they will take up about 10% of the building, which would be 25 units. Assisted living, about 90 units. And assisted living typically, you have home care, you can have meals delivered, you can have meals in the common dining areas on the site. You also have services provided such as a hairstylist, a small convenience store, and I don't want to say taxi service, but it's not taxi service. Services, drive services to doctor's appointments.
Transportation.
Yes.
So like a private?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And then the independent living is basically those who don't want to live in their 30,000-square-foot lots and 60,000-square-foot lots anymore, but still want to stay in the community. And, you know, they have total independence. They can have their car, they go and do the grocery shopping, they use all the conveniences of the town.
How many independent unit?
That would be about 135 is what we're looking at. That's a general breakdown of what we're -- where we're at right now. The units break down to studio units, which have about 435 square feet. One-bedroom units, which range from 570 to 775 square feet. And two-bedroom units, which range from 840 square feet to 1,050. The layout of the property will have three stories. And it is to be constructed in accordance with the Town of Dayton and the Commonwealth of Mass regulations. The zoning for the site is residential agricultural at this time, so by bylaws, we will need to apply for a special permit. I have prepared two plans this evening, and I can briefly go over them. The first is an overall aerial view of the area. And to acclimate yourself, this long stretch here is William Street, and along the bottom is Anderson Drive. And I wanted to show the property, which is highlighted in this darker lines here, in conjunction with the already-approved conservation subdivision. So the lots that are outlined here are the ones that were approved by the conservation subdivision. We have recently gone before the planning board to relocate the clubhouse, and that has been approved. The clubhouse is to be located up in this area here. Its primary access for the public is this Serpentine Road that comes out onto William Street, which has also been approved by the planning board. In talking with the planning board and the fire department, we agreed to tie in to the existing conservation subdivision. So with two sets of gates and key cards, so that members of the subdivision can travel into the clubhouse area, use it, and that members of the private can't cut through and go out onto it, so it won't be used as a cut-through. We created a lot of speed bumps and key cards and just for that reason. But it also gives access for the fire department to come through and access this portion of Anderson Drive, rather than going all the way down to Shop-Sop Road, taking a left, coming into Anderson Drive. So it gives them somewhat shorter route if they needed at that time. So that's just a little backup on this. So back to the location of the proposed continuing care facility is this structure right in here. And I have a closer blow-up of the area. So to acclimate yourself again, this is William Street here, and then a much closer view. This is the access road that goes down to the clubhouse. We are proposing the access to the continuing care facility to be off of this driveway. Although we have frontage, which on the parcel further up on William Street, we believe, in talking with our transportation department, that maintaining one driveway on a 50 mile-an-hour street and not having consecutive driveways where you could have traffic in and out is just too concentrated in one area is a better situation. So we would be coming in through this driveway, accessing the property. This will be a standalone special permit. We are not going to revise the or amend the original special permit. That was for the conservation subdivision. There's no need to for this. It can stand alone on its own property. The only common item would be the access off of that. Utilities that we have out on the site, we have public water that's available, electric cable. That's about all we get in Dayton. Then.
Depends where you live. Two members of this board are tied into public sewer.
Yeah, one of the lucky ones. Consultation with the gas company is going to go forward to see if it's suitable for them to actually extend their gas mains up into this area.
How close are you right now?
To?
How close is the Columbia Gas to Hunter's Hill?
I think we're Main Street, I believe, is, and that's maybe about two and a half, three miles out. So, all right. So that's.
What about from the Somerset End? Or is that even further?
Yeah, I think that might be further. I'll have to look.
Okay.
That's a good question. On-site sewage for the clubhouse and the conservation subdivision, we are constructing an onsite sanitary wastewater facility. And we are going through the final stages now of approval with DEP. And that system is going to be out in this area behind the clubhouse. We would be doing the same type system for the continued care facility, but a separate system. We won't be tying into this one, so they would have their own, and that would be located on the site also.
Is your -- how are you going to discharge?
So it's an actual facility where you have the settling tanks, you have the aeration, and you have the.
Like a municipal treatment plant would be, on a smaller scale?
On a small scale.
Okay.
But then you have the leaching beds.
Okay, okay.
Okay. But you get a much higher, cleaner discharge from the structure. We have had site constraints, such as wetlands, have been flagged. We have approached the Conservation Commission for an ANRAD, and we need to amend that to add into, we have additional wetlands over in this area that we want them to locate. So we're in the process of re-filing Conservation Commission to get the ANRAD updated. So we have wetlands that are definitely along William Street and then to the rear of the proposed facility. So we would need to address those concerns with Conservation and DEP. So as part of the total package, of course, we have construction of this facility, the entrance way, parking lots. Our proposal is to create small areas tucked in and around the building to do small, little parking areas rather than one lodge. We feel it's better. We're able to manage stormwater easier that way, where we don't have one lodge detention bond, where you have flat surfaces of pavement. We break it up so that we have small bioretention areas, we have small tree wells and soils, and we can manage it much easier that way.
I will mention, we don't like to use retention and detention. Infiltration basins.
Infiltration.
Because we want dry basins.
Exactly.
Just in talking to that. In that diagram there, would you just point out where each of those types of facilities are? In other words, if I were interested in assisted living, where would I live? Which, where would I live in that diagram?
In the facility? The way the architect has it set up right now, the larger wings would be more of the assisted, I mean, I'm sorry, the independent living.
Okay.
The assisted living are the smaller units located in these wings, one of which is typically the top floor is the memory care.
Okay.
So they have series of alarms and everything just to.
So where would there be 24-hour staff?
The common areas are located in this main office here, and then within each corridor, there are also staff offices.
And obviously, the third floor, there would be.
There's nursing, you'd have the nursing staff.
Medical care. Oh, yeah. Okay, I understand.
So the 135 independent units, do they also receive, and it was kind of a weird question, do they also receive some sort of assistance? Or do they have access to that assistance in case they need it?
Yeah.
How does that work?
They do. I've been involved with approximately four of these right now. And typically, what happens is a person comes in in the independent, completely independent, they have their own vehicle, they do their own shopping, they have their own kitchen. But as the years progress, they are able to buy into the dining area. So they're like, well, you know, I think three days out of the week, I'd rather go sit in the dining area than have to cook my own meals. So they can buy into that. And then if their unit gets too large, they can move into the assisted area, which, you know, they have more services in that area. And, you know, hopefully, that's as far as they need to go.
If, all right, so if I wanted to occupy an independent living area, is there, to begin with, an age limit?
I, we have not discussed the age limit.
Okay. Is it income-based?
That again, we, I.
You haven't discussed that.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's assume I, whatever the criteria is, I meet the criteria, and I want to live in independent living. My husband and I, so you would have the, there's a facility, there is a, based on the layout, two people could live in assisted, excuse me, independent living. Okay. Am I paying rent or am I buying something? Am I buying into a condo or am I going to pay rent for, like renting an apartment? Like in a par- a rental like in a par-?
Like in a par.
Okay, all right. And then, as you said, if, if, when the need arose, I could move into assisted living. And now, I understand about memory care. Is that care on the third floor limited to memory care, or would it be a nursing home? Or is it strictly memory care? Memory care?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So it would be like nursing home care for people who have, need assistance because of memory loss or Alzheimer's or whatever? Okay, I understand. Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. Mr. Almeida, I've also looked into a setting up a, a way of making some of these affordable housing.
Okay.
And to meet the town's requirements. Because I know that we're far from our quota.
Correct.
And so this could be, you know, a good chunk of that that we could provide.
Okay.
But we, that is definitely.
That would be interesting.
Yeah. So that is definitely on the table, and.
I would think all of the memory care would fall into that category.
Probably would. It probably would.
Okay. And assisted living, potentially, so, okay. Now, so just to bring me back to William Street. And I live, I live in one of those, I'm in the independent living, one of those units. I come down William Street, and I'm going to access that from that driveway right there?
Yes.
Okay. And I can access my building. If I've got a friend living down where the independent, where the home, single-family homes are, can I get to them? I got to go out onto William Street and go Anderson Drive?
Yes.
Up to the gate?
Because they will be two separate.
You're not going to have through traffic?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So you would go out and around, and?
Yes.
You may be able to walk there, because I think you must put some type of trails there.
Yeah.
There you go.
Walking trails are definitely on our list as amenities.
That depends on my physical condition, right?
Well, you said independent, so.
Hopefully, I'm still ameliorated.
We're not going to let her go alone, though.
So I realize you have wetlands in the, if that's due north, in the east.
Yes.
Can, does that property go out to Elm Street? Is it, does it go that far?
This one is, no. No, but there is.
Hot Street?
There is.
Paper Street, Hot Street.
Yeah, okay. The paper Hot Street. Okay. I understand. Okay. All right. After you, how long, how long do you think it's going to go? Is, how long is it going to take to get through the various permitting process of things locally? I know you're dealing with DEP, that's a whole other situation. But you have conservation, you're going to have to go to zoning, planning. So in a, in an ideal situation, what, such, you have experience with these. What do you think the timeline is, would be, assuming you go through the process and everything that you have to do, you do, and you get your permitting process. When do you think you would start construction?
Permitting process is going to take a good eight to 12 months.
Months?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Without DEP?
We need them.
Well, obviously.
For a few things.
Right.
To get us to the next step. So for instance, for the siding of the onsite sanitary system, we need to do, you know, the test, and we need them to confirm that what we're doing is okay before we commit to, this is where we're putting the building, so.
Do you need approval from the Department of Public Health or from, I'm not sure if it's JCO or who, for the facility on the third floor?
There is, it is not under the Department of Public Health, it is under something else. But yes, there is, yeah.
Okay. All right. So that's, that's built into that permitting process?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so now, eight to 12 months have gone by, and you've got the permits and the permissions, and the plans are all set. From the day you break ground to when I can move into my unit, how long does it take, roughly?
Oh, we haven't really figured out what.
Okay.
Probably a year or two.
Yeah, I would say, I'm trying to think back, if you'll forgive me, I'm trying to do a little math here. Maybe, yeah, slightly 12 to 18 months.
Okay. And will it, will you build the entire site, or will you build, for example, independent living first, and that's available?
We might.
In other words, would you open it in sections?
The way the building is, as you can see, it's very crab-like, and it's apparent that the different wings are set up so that if we do one assisted living and one independent living, we can pick and say, all right, we're just going to do one of these and one of these. But in, we'd have the main building, and then you could construct the others. So it does not have to be all done all at the same time. We could do it in phases.
And if you do one of each, obviously, the unit on the third floor would be there because that's.
On top.
Across the top of.
Exactly. So they are set up very modular, and that's how they have been, you know, constructed them, and it gives them the freedom of, you know, not having an empty building or making.
Right. And as long as you've got the septic, the treatment plant in, and you've got water, and whether or not you have gas, you'll have some obvious method of heat and all that utilities. Are any of the projects that you have worked on or that you're familiar with similar to this?
There are, different in sizes. We are, they range from one that is basically 24 units. I worked with the city of Attleboro, for instance, on the Christopher Heights, that one there. There's one in Cambridge that has, last count, they were over 300. So, and they're a very large operator. They do quite, quite a few, and they are now moving into the Rhode Island area, so.
Who's actually going to be in charge of this when it's built? In other words, do you have a management company, or who would I pay my rent to? And who is going to be there?
Mr. Almeida?
It would be me.
Oh!
Once I get the go-ahead, I'm going to have professionals come aboard.
Like a management company that oversees it and makes sure that the maintenance is done and things like that? I understand.
Yeah, there are firms that this is all they do. They know from soup to nuts, as far as the staff or your house cleaning, all the way up to, you know, keeping the rent and making sure the lights stay on. So they do it, and the ones I work with do it very well, so.
So my question, so first of all, I definitely want to take my hat off, because I think there are a lot of people who have been wanting some sort of, an assisted living facility in town. So definitely, it is a great idea. My question is more logistical. So once everything is said and done, and the units are ready for people to quote-unquote "move in," will priority be given to people from Dayton that are applying? Or does anybody have equal right from other surrounding towns?
I'm not sure how we would, how that could be structured.
That's a good question.
It's a very good question.
I would say the town first.
I haven't answered. So I spoke to the state.
You're not getting the first option.
No. Sounds like you're first.
She's already got the unit picked out.
I'm not getting it younger.
So obviously, you can see with the amount of development that's going on in town that this is an opportunity if we can isolate some of the units as affordable and meet our threshold, or at least get closer to it. So when Tony and I spoke two weeks ago, the next call I made was to the state, who oversees the affordable housing counts that we have in Dayton. And they told me, as long as the developer is willing to work with the town, we can work towards a common goal where they can be, fall under the criteria that would allow us to count them as affordable. However, just like any other affordable that we have in town that's been permitted, there would have to be some preferential treatment towards Dayton residents first. That's typically how all of them operate. It's a little bit different than what we're used to, but the mechanics are mostly the same. So it doesn't mean that you have to just do the Dayton people, but if you have rooms available and we have people in Dayton who can qualify and better factor, then they get, they get first dibs.
That sounds fair.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
One of the, one of the things that's been discussed over the years, and, and people have said this to me, people who've actually had to move out of town because they own property in town, they're elderly, they don't want to maintain property, and they are a construction of split entry. So you walk in and you're on one level, and you go up some stairs or you go down some stairs. And they had reached the point that they could no longer do the stairs, period. And they were looking for, they wanted to stay in Dayton, whether it was a condo or a facility or a house they could buy, where they could be on one floor and not have to maintain yards and all that type of thing. The, the units that you're talking about, independent living, are they all on one floor?
Yes.
Now, the building obviously is three stories, so it's got an elevator. So the first two floors in independent living would be, I'll call them apartments. And so they would be readily available to somebody who, a resident of Dayton who says, I'm tired of mowing the lawn, I don't want to do this anymore, I don't want to, but I don't want to leave town. So this was a need that was pointed out years ago. And we've talked to, when I was on the board the last time, we did talk to various developers, and we had people make proposals, but nothing ever got off the ground. So where this is really mixed, and if some of them are affordable units, which will help with our affordable count. But then there are others that, I'll call them the market rent, that anyone could go into, and actually wouldn't have to qualify. They would qualify for the low income or the, you know, to meet our quota. But somebody that just wants to say, I'm selling my house, and I'm going to go here to live, they would just be, it's just a rental unit. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I, I, we use the term low income, but, you know, there, there are. And I, I, we use the term "low income," but, you know, there are subsidies that are allowed or available for people in their elder years, and some of those quantify the requirement for affordable housing. So, you know, based, I mean, this is in its infancy, but this is step one. Obviously, you know, Mr. Almeida wanted to get it out to the public so that, you know, everything was open and transparent. But I think it's finally an opportunity for this town to move to the next step, where we're not constantly burdening, burdening our infrastructure, which our schools in particular.
Correct.
Which we all know is a sore spot, and might bring a lot of transient traffic into town, not transient in a bad way, transient in a good way. People are going to come visit relatives, you know, friends, family, and they all spend money at local businesses, so, you know, I think we need to keep an open mind, and I know Tony is, is a man of his word, so if he says he wants to build it, he'll build it, so.
I think, as I said, describing the independent living, I believe that will certainly address a number of issues. As I said, when I was on the board the last time, a number of people said that, and we did talk to developers, we just didn't get anywhere. Now, is the entire facility, certainly probably the assisted living and the memory unit would be, independent living, age limit, minimum age?
Yeah, since you, we haven't spoken to that yet.
All right, because my other concern would be, as Mr. Agia pointed out, our schools are reaching capacity.
No school age children.
All right, so that would be, that would be, when I say age limit.
We're probably looking 50 over.
Okay.
Or 55 or better, because our houses here are 55 and better.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking at, because the people that approached me, quite frankly, were well beyond 50 or 55. But their one desire was, "I want to stay in town." And there was no accommodation, and some moved to some of the communities, like Middleborough has the kind of 55 community, age 55 and up communities, and Lakeville has some of that property on Route 79. And I know that's where some of the people that I spoke to sold out of Dayton, and they went only for the reason that somebody was going to mow their lawn and provide services, but they were still independent, you know, could get around, so I think, I think there's, there's, and the way you've broken it up, I think there is definitely a population, in the general population, that can be divided up into people who would want this type of unit. And quite frankly, even if there weren't enough people in Dayton for the memory care unit, I don't think you're going to have any trouble filling it up, because it just seems the demand for that just continues to grow and grow and grow. And, and until they find some way of, I don't know, slowing down Alzheimer's or curing it, or whatever, I think we're going to see, you know, people in need of those kinds of services just continue, so. Now, when you were talking about, you said you would have your own ambulance services, you got your own treatment plant, you've got public water, excuse me, you're working on natural gas, you got cable. So... I'm trying to picture this whole thing. Could you put the, the Google Earth map up again, the big one, I guess? Because when that was up there, I looked at that and I thought of something. Okay, so the, the upper left-hand corner is the area of development, correct?
This is, this is the structure here.
Right, and just below that is the road from Williams Street coming in?
Yeah.
Okay. Is, so that road comes in from Williams Street. All of this property is private. The entire Hunter's Hill is private. You're going to maintain everything, you're going to plow the roads and?
We do that.
Do everything, okay. Is the road from Williams Street, does that end at the facility, at the building? Because it, we know it's not going to go through, so where is it actually going to end? Is it at the building?
For the driveway into, down to the clubhouse. There will be a connection from the edge of the parking lot into the subdivision. But that's where we have, it's just a, a small driveway with the two key cards. So, if you were coming up at Williams Street and you did not live in this, in the subdivision down below, you have to stop at the clubhouse. Use that facility, and then you're out of there, back on Williams Street, so.
If I, if I'm a golfer, and I'm living in independent living, can I access the?
Oh, yes.
Facilities?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
The clubhouse and whatever else may develop. Okay, how many homes have completed right now in Hunter's Hill?
About 27, 27.
About 27, okay.
A lot more to go.
When, when the, when the development is built out, how close to this facility will you be? Where will the development start of the single-family homes?
They will stop right here.
Okay.
This will be the last, and then this will be up in this area. In this area, the closest house is the Sousa property, which is the one, just, it will be just in front of it. Other than that, the closest property.
The one on Williams Street?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
And then the offsets for the property lines, we have between 400 and 600 feet on the sideline, and then there's absolutely nothing behind it, so.
And so, as Mr. Agia mentioned, if I'm ambulatory, I can walk over.
Yep.
So, are you planning? Is there going to be like a park area and walking trails and things like that?
Yes, yep. Yep, we have.
We've got some already.
That we can, yeah.
In the development?
Yes.
Okay.
So we would be adding on, so that all the areas would be connected. So you could walk from this area down through the clubhouse, down through the walking trails in the subdivision, so it's quite a good.
I know you're saying driveway, I'm saying street. These would have sidewalks, I would assume?
They do.
Okay, okay. And actually, I would assume, the address, the address is not going to be Williams Street, it's going to be that, that road coming in? Or is it going to be Williams Street?
That's a private, it, it will be a private driveway, but it's constructed to the town's standards for the width.
But what I'm saying is, if you live in the facility, is your address Williams Street, or is that entrance, that road, driveway?
It'd probably be Clubhouse Drive.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
We'd have to discuss that with 911 if I achieve, but it probably would be Clubhouse Drive and not Williams Street.
Okay, all right. Does anyone in the audience have questions, comments? Mr. Barry, you don't have to plow that one.
You're too young.
Depends on how long it takes to build it. So, you put your name in for the first one, and hope that they get it built before you end up, you know?
Sounds excellent.
I'd just like to make one comment echoing what you've said. Everyone knows I'm, I'm all over the town, and I've, on numerous occasions, I've had elders in our town mention that there's no place for them to go, they're on a waiting list at Lincoln Village, they were born here, they love it here, and they don't want to leave here, but Selectman Goulart's right, they can't take care of the grass, the big yard anymore, and sometimes, you know, I hear about the taxes too, so they're on a fixed income. So, I definitely think, although I don't think Dayton residents will fill it completely, I think it would certainly be something that benefits the town's people.
I just wanted to add, not, not to piggyback off the building commissioner and Selectman Goulart, I've also heard the same thing. I have actually had people ask me for Mr. Seuss's contact info at Lincoln Village to find out that they were going on a waiting list, that basically they got the message that they'll probably never be moving into Lincoln Village anytime soon. And as a result, they had to move out of Dayton, and they didn't want to do that, they grew up here. So, so again, I would like to see, I'm really curious to see how this will progress, but I like the idea simply because, you know, you're going to possibly satisfy some of the affordable housing requirements. You will be able to accommodate some of the needs of the people who have been lifelong residents, who, again, are on a fixed income, cost of living increases every year, but I doubt their income does, especially if they're on a fixed one. So I think there are a lot of benefits and residual benefits to a plan like this, without putting a further burden on the schools and, and other public services like that, especially since it sounds like this will really be an independent operation from, from public, from a public safety perspective, all the way to a public works perspective as well. So light footprint on, on services to the taxpayers, so, very interesting.
I think, I think another plus is also about, I know there's a waiting list at Lincoln Village, but also, to get into Lincoln Village, you have to meet income limits. And if you're a hair over the limit, you are not allowed to go there. So, where this will not have those kinds of constraints, the people I talked about that moved out of town, they could not get into Lincoln Village because of income. And, as I say, there were no options for them in town. So they sold out and moved to another community where they could have their own home, but they aren't mowing grass and shoveling walks and doing all those things. So, so I think this opens up more housing for people that want to stay in town and not overburden town services. But, Mr. O'Brien? Dayton Water District. And I don't know if you want to respond to this or not, but this type of facility, because you're obviously supplying the water, is that correct? Do you have any concerns, comments, or anything, about anything you've heard so far, as far as capacity of the Dayton Water District to be able to service this type of facility?
No concern, just, we're going to invite Mr. Almeida to the next, to the district meeting to explain it further, but.
I have no concerns, just, just came to listen and see, and, that's it. But yeah, we'd be more than happy, I know the commissioners would love to, to have the same, you know, more boring questions about different connections and stuff, but no, no concerns.
Not about supply or anything like that? You've got the capacity. Okay. Mr. Barry, you have any comments? I know it's, you're not doing the roads, but just any comments.
I noticed some possible engineering concerns. I'll speak to the engineer afterwards.
Okay.
Assisting materials, you watch out for it.
Okay.
Which one have we got molasses? We've got to talk about molasses, though.
Mr. Barry's going to tell you about the last. And how to keep your roads ice-free?
He's going to give the private, private plower some tips.
We do an amazing job on the roadways, hats off.
If you don't use molasses and magnesium, you haven't lived.
Secret formula.
You're not on the cutting edge.
Seriously, if you go to Google, put in Dayton, Mass., molasses, you will get all the information you need. Seriously.
Keep it out.
Does anybody else want to comment, or ask questions, or whatever, so?
Well, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
We appreciate it, very, very. I do want to ask you one thing before you go, just, before you proposed this idea, had you spoke to people in Dayton and kind of gathered that something like this might be needed? Because I just find the timing to be.
It's been going on for years.
Nice.
So the people that had it before me wanted this, but they never followed it up. If I took it a step further, then hopefully it's going to go now.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I think in closing, this is step one. There are, there are a few boards who actually have the governance over this project. Planning Board in particular, zoning board will be involved, and obviously Conservation Commission. So, you know, my hope is that you move forward with the permitting process. We, we would encourage anyone at home who has questions or comments to reach out to any of us, so that we can make this a fluid process from start to finish. I would hope to see that it works, but I would like to also add that Mr. Almeida has been a wonderful developer to work with. We all know that we have quite a few in town, but as things have progressed with his subdivision that's currently permitted and evolved, and I've had questions, concerns, or comments, he's been very forthright. You know, I'll give you one simple one, for instance, a lot of people who bought homes in Hunter's Hill have big RVs, but in the original plan, there was no place to put them. So, you know, he now realizes that he needs to make an area for those RVs to park, so that they're not on streets, or dead ends, or cul-de-sacs, or things like that. So it may seem like something trivial, but, you know, it's something that the town didn't think of, but the developers willing to work with the town and with the residents to make it happen. So I think it would be a, a good relationship for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting on March 15th, 2017 be approved.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those not opposed? The ayes have it, meeting minutes have been approved. He's going one meeting, I'm trying to sign him to chair. I'm just joking, Selectman Cronin. Thank you. Thank you. Moving right along to the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrant be approved. Warrant 39A-17 in the amount of $78,107.82 payroll. Warrant 39B-17 in the amount of $23,445.25 payroll. Warrant 39C-17 in the amount of $80,030.15 accounts payable. Warrant 39D-17 in the amount of $479.69 accounts payable. And warrant 39E-17 in the amount of $100.73 accounts payable be approved.
I'll step down and second that motion. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the warrants have been approved.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, I see we have some young gentlemen here in uniform tonight. And I don't see them on the agenda, so, gentlemen, what brings you to the Board of Selectments meeting tonight?
It's one of our requirements, we have to attend a selectance meeting.
So is this for a badge? How are you?
Yes, it is.
It is? Okay, well, I hope you find it interesting.
A lot of laughter.
We try to make this like, fun and, you know.
So welcome, what troop are you in?
Forty-five.
Both of you?
Right down in the capital, in the infantry.
Okay.
Less required than we need, I believe.
One of us, yes.
Are you the scout master?
Scout master, from the back, and scout master for the troop, yes.
Okay, all right, how are you? Good to see you. And these are your parents, I assume?
My grandfather, and this is Seuss, this is his mother.
Okay, welcome. I hope you enjoy yourself, and if we do something, and you're wondering, what are they doing, or what does that mean? Just put your hand up, and the chairman will call on you, and you can ask your question, okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome. Correspondence. The first piece of correspondence we have is regarding a South Coast Rail notification. I think we may be having some interest in this, Selectman Goulart.
Uh-huh.
So, following the continuing saga of the elusive South Coast Rail, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I will just summarize. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation did in fact file a notice of project change on the 15th of March of this year, so just last week, the week before, in order to advance the option of an interim service serving both New Bedford and Fall River using the existing Middleborough-Lakeville commuter rail line, while at the same time, work proceeds to design, permit, and fund the Stoughton Electric Final Phase Project, including particularly the so-called Southern Triangle. I don't quite understand why they're proceeding with the Stoughton one, but also the Middleborough one, but they claim that they are. I'm not buying it. Part of the reason I'm not buying it is simply because, as I also understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Selectman Goulart, Mass. DOT also filed to do an environmental study, which was already done on the Stoughton Line and been approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. Engineers. So they already had the green light, but instead, they have miraculously decided to study the Middleborough. What do we call that? The wide, the wide right turn?
The right-hand detour.
The right-hand detour, instead of the straight shot from Stoughton. So another little piece of information is that our state senator, Mr. Mark Pacheco, has filed litigation. He obviously taunting wants the Stoughton Line, not the Middleborough one. So we'll see, we'll see how this pans out in the future, but I did just want to keep everybody abreast of the goings on.
And we're still opposed to Middleborough?
We are. We have been and we are and we will be, whether they build it from Middleborough or not.
They're asking for input, so they'll probably get some.
Well, we definitely, we definitely followed them around from the traveling tour from city to city and, you know, unfortunately, our input fell on deaf ears and they're going to proceed with Middleborough anyway, but at least they're making us feel like they're proceeding with Stoughton, so.
Well, I think the other thing.
They're not going to do both.
The other thing that is in conflict, they were going to, there's no question, the most direct route is the Stoughton Route. It's the shortest route. They've overcome every environmental objection in study. And the most difficult thing to get is the Army Corps of Engineers, which they got. However, people from the New Bedford area and Fall River are saying, but we want it sooner. So if you come up to, and they're not even sure now if it's going to be Cotley Junction, they're not sure where they're going to build that station. It could end up in Berkeley, but not Myerix. Somewhere near Route 24 where the railroad overpasses and somewhere behind Target and So given us that now, and while we have our connection to get our people to Boston, you can start building the Stoughton Connection. And when you build a Stoughton Connection, you must use electric trains because we want the environment to benefit from the electric trains. They're going to run the diesels on the Middleborough Line, so they are not going to be eliminating pollution. If they build a Stoughton Line and run diesel trains, which is what runs now with the exception of Essella on the Northeast Corridor, they will, number one, the Stoughton Route will pick up more passengers. The Middleborough Route is much longer. And having been a commuter for many years, I would not go to Middleborough to spend another 30 minutes or more on that commuter train when I know I go to Mansfield, that's the fastest track. And those are diesels. It's the heaviest traveled stretch of railroad in Massachusetts. They're holding out saying that the Stoughton Line must have the electrified trains like Essella. These are not going to be high-speed rail like Essella, but they're going to be electrified. That adds a billion dollars to the project. My personal feeling is they're trying to kill the Stoughton Route by saying it's too expensive. If the goal is to get more people off of the road, which means get more vehicles off of the road, because people are driving to parking lots and getting on a train, start with diesels. You can do the electrification later. If Essella had to wait, excuse me, if the Northeast Corridor, just Amtrak before Essella, had to wait for electrification, they probably wouldn't be running Amtrak on there now. They were running commuter rail and freight and Amtrak on the Northeast Corridor. Electrification came because of really high-speed rail. That's the fastest rail we have. That's Essella. Essella will not run on the Stoughton Line. It's built for commuter. But the fact of the matter is, there is definitely a positive impact by getting people off of the roads. And the Stoughton Route is the shortest way to go, so build the tracks. It's about eight miles, they told us, when they finally figured out the answer to the Diesel is what they're running now. Diesel will get people off the road. But the main thing is get as many off the road as you can and get them to Boston as fast as you can get them there. That's what people want, if they're going to commute to Boston. So Brett and I have attended meetings. We've expressed strong support for the Stoughton Rail. We've also expressed our opinions that they seem to think because commuter rail is not planned to come through Dighton, we've been ignored. Well, that's also ended. So we will take a look at that and probably send in, because they're asking for input. And I think every time they ask, we're going to have to send something in.
Absolutely.
Just to let them know, you know, we still support Stoughton. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have a piece of correspondence from our Town Treasurer regarding excise tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Gentlemen, could you just give Mrs. Brady your name, so we will put it in the minutes that you've attended the meeting tonight as part of your Cub Scout requirement?
Zeus.
Zeus Pierce and Nicholas Poore.
Oh, just give them, okay. You're going to be in the public record that you were here, just in case there's any questions.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And the rest of us get to stay and don't earn a badge.
I get recognized for, you know, doing your Cub Scouts.
So we received a letter from our Treasurer Collector, Ms. Mary Hathaway, on the 23rd of March regarding an address change. She writes, Dear Board of Selectmen, please read this notice at your next Wednesday night Selectment's meeting. There is a new address to submit payments for the motor vehicle excise taxes. The new address is PO Box 822-545, Boston, Massachusetts, 02284. If you have any questions at all, please don't hesitate to call my office at 508-669-5411, extension five. Respectfully submitted. Mary Hathaway, Treasurer Collector.
Would you read that box number again?
Absolutely. Again, the PO Box is 822-545, Boston, Massachusetts, 02284. Okay. Announcements.
No, we got one more in the correspondence.
Oh. So we received a survey, a sanitary survey report from the Department of Environmental Protection, Mass DEP. The letter is just regarding Dighton's public water supply. And the letter states, Dear Mr. Tracy, who is at the North Dighton Fire District, please find attached the sanitary survey report for a survey performed at North Dighton Fire District, Dighton, Massachusetts, on December 21st of 2016. Capacity is the ability of a public water system to plan for, achieve, and maintain financial, managerial, and technical compliance with applicable federal and state drinking water standards for the foreseeable future. Capacity also requires the demonstration of effective controls in all three areas. As a result of this inspection, the North Dighton Fire District is determined to have an adequate capacity rating. This system is currently complying with all national primary drinking water standards and Mass DEP drinking water regulations. In addition to meeting all drinking water regulations, the system demonstrates a willingness and ability to plan for a wide variety of future impacts. Please note that the signature on this cover letter indicates formal issuance of the attached document. If you have any questions regarding this document, please contact Gillian Tardo at 508-946-2789, and also indicated her email address sincerely, Richard J. Rondo, Chief, Drinking Water Program, Bureau of Water Resources. A copy of this will be on file here in the Selectmen's Office. But just so everybody watching knows, having adequate capacity rating is a good thing. So we are compliant with all national and state drinking water regulations. Thank you, Ms. Brady. Moving right along to announcements. Trash bags, sharps, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's Office. Call 508-669-6431 for more information. Burning season is now through May 1st of 2017. Permits may be obtained at Dighton Fire Station, 300 Main Street, for $10. Please make checks payable to the Town of Dighton. Checks only, please. There are vacancies on the Historical Commission, Cable Commission, and the Open Space Committee. Annual Town Election will be Saturday, April 8th, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Dighton Elementary School. The Dighton Lions Food Bank Distribution will be held on April 22nd in the lower level of Town Hall. There will be a rabies clinic on April 29th from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the North Dighton Fire Station. $12 for immunizations, cash only, please. The Town Clerk will also be available at that time for dog licensing. The Seventh Annual Easter Egg Hunt has been changed to Sunday, April 2nd at 12:00 noon behind Town Hall. Please bring your Easter basket and a camera for pictures. Sponsored by Dighton Parks and Recreation. Thank you, Dighton Parks and Recreation. Anawan Pharmacy at 224 Winthrop Street, Rehoboth, is now offering free supplies of chewable multivitamins to school-aged children. Call 774-901-2445 for more information, or visit www.anawanpharmacy.com. I have been to Anawan Pharmacy recently. I did not buy the chewable multivitamins for school-aged children. I prefer the gummies, but it was a very nice atmosphere to have a local pharmacy, not like a big CVS. I have nothing against CVS.
I go there. No, I stopped there.
Yeah? Did you like it?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought it was really nice, getting to know your pharmacy, your pharmacist. It was a very small-town atmosphere. I really appreciated it.
I'll just give them a little plug. If you need a greeting card, all their greeting cards, I believe, are 99 cents. And they are nice cards, and they carry whatever the holiday is, but if you need a greeting card and you're in that area, definitely worth stopping in.
Yeah, they had a lot more than pharmacy stuff, as we would, as we would call it. They had a lot of different stuff in there.
It reminds me of Sedell's. If anyone remembers Sedell's pharmacies that were in Rainham, there was one in the zone down near where tourist insurance is. They were independently owned, but it was the kind of place you could go in and very accommodating, very small-town feeling.
I liked it.
Yeah.
You know, everybody looks like that Cheers atmosphere. Everybody knows your name. You know, he knows, hey, do you want this again? You know, he's already got it ready when you come through the door.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, really nice. Everybody should stop and check it out. Dighton Water District will be conducting water main flushing starting Monday, April 3rd through Friday, April 21st, 2017. The work will take place between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 and 3:00 a.m. This will result in discolored water and low water pressure. Customers should curtail their laundry operations during these times, especially with your whites. The Water District cannot be held responsible for any damages incurred as a result of the flushing program, which is a necessary and normal maintenance function. Neighborhood cleanup is scheduled for Saturday, April 29th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Meet at the transfer station at 9:00 a.m. Please wear appropriate clothing and shoes. Do not forget to bring gloves. Contact Vicky Piazza at 508-824-0488, or check the Positively Dighton Facebook page for more information. There also is an event on Facebook, too, with all the details. Primetime, our supportive adult day program, is in need of a gentleman to volunteer for a six-hour project. Must enjoy working with the elderly and must pass a query check. For more information, please call 508-669-6272. Before we move on, we also had a couple of food recalls we'd like to make the public aware of. Thank you. Selectmen Goulart, did you want to read a couple? I'll read a couple.
Sure. I just want to comment on the cleanup day. Obviously, you're going to be working along the sides of town roads. Be prepared with some kind of bug repellent, because the ticks are already out. I heard that on the news the other night. So deer ticks and all those other kind of ticks are out already, so be prepared to have some kind of protection if you're going to volunteer to help out. Oh, Whole Foods again, again. This is an allergy alert issued by Whole Foods Market in Hadley, Massachusetts, which is right next door to Amherst, Mass. The recall is for undeclared walnuts in banana-chocolate chip muffins. Whole Foods in Hadley, Mass. is issuing an allergy alert to recall six-packs of banana-chocolate muffins due to an in-store labeling error. The muffins, which were labeled as "Made Right Here" six-pack banana-chocolate chip muffins, contain walnuts, which were not declared on the ingredient list. So the, obviously, if you have an allergy to walnuts, you should be aware of this. The muffins were sold in clear plastic six-pack containers and had a sell-by date of May the 28th. Consumers who have purchased this product may bring their receipt to the store for a full refund. And consumers with questions, there's a phone number here, and if anyone was out in the Amherst area, Hadley, and may have purchased this product and you need more info, please get in touch with us. Hopefully, nobody, nobody did. But I realize Hadley is a ways from here, but because of the number of UMass students out in that area, I'm sure there's Dighton people at the bar there. And this one is Whiskey Hills Smokehouse recalls beef, venison, and ostrich jerky products due to misbranding and undeclared allergens. Whiskey Hills Smokehouse, a Hubbard, Oregon establishment, is recalling approximately 22,466 pounds of beef, venison, and ostrich jerky products due to misbranding and undeclared allergens. USDA Food Safety and Inspection Service announced this today. These products contain soy, a known allergen, which is not declared on the product label. The heat-treated shelf-stable beef, venison, and ostrich jerky items were produced and packaged on various dates from March 3rd, 2016, through March 10th, 2017. There is a very long list. There's pages.
It was a long one.
There's, it's about four pages of items with lot numbers. So if you consume or have in your home jerky, please get in touch with this office for more info. There have been no confirmed reports of adverse reactions due to consumption of these products. If you have them, you are urged not to consume them. They should be thrown away or returned to the place of purchase. And anyone with questions about the recall can contact Jerry Bowman, owner, at area code 503-9812915. Again, if you, oh, this is handy. Consumers with food safety questions can ask Karen. Don't think that's our Karen, but we would suggest if you have questions, get in touch with our Karen. Okay? So I think that's everything here.
Thank you. So I have two food recalls myself. One states that Riviana Foods Incorporated is recalling certain Ronzoni Thin Spaghetti, ooh, that's a staple in our house, going to have to check now, due to possible undeclared egg allergen. This just states Riviana Foods Incorporated is voluntarily recalling 610 cases of certain coated Ronzoni Thin Spaghetti cartons that may contain an egg fettuccine product. People who have an allergy or severe sensitivity to egg run the risk of serious or life-threatening allergic reaction if they consume these products. The affected product was processed at a Riviana co-manufacturer's facility on January 20th, 2017. At this time, Riviana has received no consumer communications about the affected product with this code date and no reports of illness or injury associated with this product. Consumers should return the affected product to the store where they purchased it for a full refund. Consumers who may have questions or concerns should call Riviana. Consumers who may have questions or concerns should call Riviana's toll-free Consumer Relations number at 1-800-730-5957 between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Eastern Standard Time. So check your thin spaghetti from Ronzoni, folks. We also have a recall from Pro Sports Club. They recalled yogurt-peanut crunch bars because of a possible health risk. Pro Sports Club of Bellevue, Wisconsin is recalling 36,957 yogurt-peanut crunch bars because it may be contaminated with E. coli, and it's a particular strain. The yogurt-peanut crunch bar was sold directly to clients at the Pro Sports facilities in Washington, Bellevue, Redmond, and Seattle between August 8th, 2016, and March 10th, 2017. Product was also sold to internet customers through the website www.2020lifestyles.com. No illnesses related to the consumption of the yogurt-peanut crunch bars have been reported to date. Consumers who have purchased yogurt-peanut crunch bars are urged not to consume and to return any remaining product to the place of purchase for a full refund. Consumers with questions may contact the company at 1-425-895-6533, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Pacific Standard Time. I just want to remind anybody watching that we do every week place these various food recalls in a binder in the foyer. It's readily available and accessible to anybody who walks through the doors here at Town Hall. If you didn't catch something, please know that we do, I do put these in the food-recall binder following the meeting, so they will be there, and you can find them there. Thank you. Old Business. So the first piece of Old Business we have.
I don't see what you can be.
Oh, I don't have that one. I apologize. Ah, thank you. I'm actually going through this. So Selectmen Gulat, maybe a month or two ago, you went to a Children's Advocacy Center event, and it's Children's Advocacy Center of Bristol County. This event, so first it says, "Keep Your Children Safe. All adults must be informed and take an active role in keeping children safe from child sexual abuse." This free workshop includes information about offender grooming behavior, internet crimes, victim advocacy, reporting, sexual behavior between children, and talking to children about child sexual abuse. Save the date, April 3rd, 2017, 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Whites of Westport. And the address is 66 State Road, Westport, Massachusetts, 02790. And they do want us to inform the public that babysitting will be available for folks who are parents and will have their children at that time, which probably most people. So again, April 3rd, 2017, 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., Whites of Westport, 66 State Road, Westport, Massachusetts, 02790. And this is the Children's Advocacy Center of Bristol County. I know you really were moved by your experience.
Yeah, I think it was the annual meeting that I went to, and I saw that. And if there is anyone out there that would be interested in attending this for informational purposes, or if you just have a general interest as a child advocate or have concerns about the issues that I talked about, it would be worthwhile to attend, because they do, they do have a need for volunteer services. And you wouldn't be making a big commitment, but if you just want to get an idea of what this is about, it certainly is. I'm glad you're gonna go, because, you know. Now that we know about it, I think it's interesting that Dyton be recognized as a community that is certainly in support of what they're doing.
Absolutely, 100%. And I appreciate you letting the board know that you went and that the experience was valuable to you.
I'd never heard of them until that notice came in, you know, so.
You found a gem. I do look forward to it. So our first piece of Old Business, Mr. O'Connor, is to review, discuss, and act on the Board of Health Organizational Committee Status Update. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the Chairman of the Board of Health Organization Committee, Mr. Ron O'Connor, who has been working day and night on this. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Thanks, Ron.
If anybody, this is an extra.
I think everybody has one, though. That worked out well, I guess.
This is extra.
So I'm here this evening on behalf of the Board of Health Organization Committee to present our final proposal for the organization of the Dyton Board of Health. I'll begin by acknowledging my committee members, Tom Pyers, Matt Tanis, and Joe Carvalho, for their commitment to this effort. We've been meeting since last fall, held, I believe, half a dozen meetings. I personally have not been working night and day, perhaps my colleagues have on the committee. I've tried to sleep at night, but I've been working many hours on this. And so let me begin by acknowledging the town voters for taking this extraordinary step last June to create a separate Board of Health appointed by the Board of Selectmen. It recognizes that as a growing community, we have many important matters that the Board of Health deals with. And this acknowledges a commitment on behalf of the voters of the town, the residents of the town, to protecting and improving the health of the residents in this community. It's an important step for this community to make and sort of recognizes that as a growing community, public health matters in this town, and I think that's an important thing. I, as a public health professional, certainly believe that important. And I'm pleased at that, and I certainly thank the Board of Selectmen and the, who also sit as the Board of Health in this town, for their commitment and their support for our work in putting this proposal together. We have, as part of this process, involved the staff of the town, who are involved in a wide range of public health matters in our deliberations. We've involved the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health in our work. And so I, we have a report here, and I, if the scouts were still here, I might just read the whole thing, just so that they could.
So they really understand what goes on here.
I'm gonna jump ahead to page 6. I would suggest, if possible, to have this posted on the town website for anybody who doesn't have an interest in reading this.
I was gonna wait until you told me. Absolutely.
So I will jump ahead to page 6, which is the recommendations of the committee, because much of this I read at a previous meeting, anyway. We made some amendments to the language, but I think the.
Mentioned one correction. I don't know if you considered page 2 or 3 if you found it. Page 3. Number 4, I think that should be Incident Command System, ICS.
Incident Comment System. Well, thank you.
Yeah, it's more than a commenting system. If it's a comment system, I did the wrong training.
It's Incident Command, Command, okay.
Well, I was hoping that the Board of Selectmen would catch that intentional error on my part.
Making sure we read every word, aren't you?
I missed that, and I'm really a stickler for those kinds of, so thank you, we will, for the record.
Thank you, Nurse Collins.
Yeah, so I will correct that, because I sent a PDF version of the final, so I'm only the one. I can make that it, and I will. So thank you. If you catch anything else before midnight tonight.
Before it goes online.
Before midnight tonight. All right, so jumping ahead, well, we have to make that change, actually, in two places, so I'll get credit for the second time, because it reappears on page 6. Anyways, I'm gonna go through these, walk through these recommendations. So I won't read them so much as, you know, also comment on them. So the first recommendation is that the appointment of, is for the appointment of Dyton residents to the initial Board of Health, who collectively have an understanding of and experience with food protection, community sanitation, animal control, stormwater, landfill management, and septic systems. The point of this is, two key points. One is Dyton residents, this appointed positions, they do not need to be Dyton residents, as I understand it, but we believe, the committee believes that having a Dyton resident appointed, at least to this initial committee, is important, because it represents a commitment to the community. And if, and if we add to that individuals who have a collective understanding of a wide range of public health topics, then I think we've met the needs of the community for a high-functioning Board of Health in this initial set of appointments. The second recommendation is a requirement that Board of Health members complete the following training programs within the specified period of time. The Massachusetts Association of Health Boards Annual Certificate Program in the year in which they are appointed, and once every three years thereafter. The Public Health Corps Training Certificate Program at the Massachusetts Local Public Health Institute, within two years of appointment. National Incident Management System, 700 training within one year of appointment. And National Incident Command System, 100 training within one year of appointment. This is an important part of the expectations of the Board of Health, and in particular, uncommon in Massachusetts to set such a robust set of training requirements. And so I'm pleased that the Town of Dyton will be setting this high standard of expectations around training for Board of Health members. I know particularly with this board, Mrs. Gulat has attended the MAHB training. I don't know if you have, Mr. Zografus, but Tom Pyers attended the Foundations for Local Health Course. So there's been a commitment of members of this board in Dyton to attend these, but by making it required, it does, it does place an element of expectations on people who are interested in the position. Our third recommendation is that the following individuals be appointed to the initial Board of Health through June 30th of 2017. Thomas Pyers, Matthew Tanis, and Kevin Bernardo. Kevin, Tom and Matt are members of this committee, have been members of the original committee that made the recommendation with regards to the separate Board of Health, and have continued on with me on this organization committee. They come, each of them, Matt, Tom, and Kevin, come with extensive experience in public health. So our rationale here was to have three people who would provide continuity from the work of the two committees to launch the Board of Health, and that they have agreed to serve without compensation for the period through the end of June to get this new Board of Health off the ground and functioning at a fairly high level and take the burden off the Board of Selectmen as quickly as possible.
Chairman O'Connor, I just wanted to ask you one question. Would the, the number two, so your second recommendation for the requirement for the various training programs that you recommended, that would be for the Board of Health starting July 1st, 2017, and not for the interim board that the committee recommended, correct? Of Mr. Pyers, Mr. Bernardo, Mr. Tanis?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure, okay. And so the appointment of those three individuals who will launch this new Board, appointed Board of Health. And the fourth, and this is particularly important, is that the appointment, that the Board of Selectmen appoint a Board of Health applicant screening and interviewing committee to avoid the appearance of conflicts of interest in the appointment of individuals to serve on the Board of Health effective July 1st of 2017. So just clarify, because we had a meeting last night that Mr. Zografus attended, and clarify that language a bit. So his understanding is that three members who are appointed for this interim period through June 30th, serving without compensation, would be then up for reappointment as of July 1st of 2017, at which time compensation would begin. But we wanted to make sure that there was no appearance that, well, these were members of the committees, and now they're sitting on the board in compensated positions. We felt that we, in order to have an open and transparent process, that the Selectmen invite Dyton residents to apply to serve on the board, and that it would be an independent group, which I am certainly willing to serve on, and I can ask Mr. Carvalho as well, and certainly the Board can appoint others to be on that committee. That would be only if needed. If only those three individuals who have been the interim members applied, then there would be no need for this independent group.
And what did I want to ask you about that? I wanted to ask you if, no, I'll let you continue, Mr. O'Connor. I don't want to keep interrupting you. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
I'll write it down anyway.
And the fifth recommendation is the length of the term of the Board of Health members will be consistent with appointments to other town boards and commissions. Number 6, the Board of Health members will be compensated at an annual rate of $5,000 each effective July 1, 2017. And finally, recommendation that there be the appointment of a full-time administrative assistant to ensure the effective functioning of the Board of Health. That last recommendation, there has been conversation both with the Selectmen and within the committee. We believe, it's one of those things where we need to see what the level of work is, but we anticipate, and once the Board gets functioning at a high level, we see this administrative assistant being, representing the Board of Health at regional meetings, for example, of the Emergency Preparedness Coalition, and other things during the workday, where members such as Mr. Tanis, who works full-time during the day, may not be able to attend. So that's, we know there's still some discussion that needs to take place about that, but that's our recommendation.
I do just want to say one thing about that, and it's no disrespect to Mr. Tanis or anybody else. But I will say, I work as well, and I do thank my colleagues for being accommodating for that. I am fortunate in that regard. My point is, I personally would never ask Ms. Brady, who has a million things to do, to attend a conference for me in my absence. I would plan accordingly with work. I'm only speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for anybody else. But I'm sure the people who wanted a separate Board of Health would prefer to have whoever is chosen to be on the Board of Health attending those meetings and not having the administrative assistant who, for the Board of Health, I assume, if they're gonna be full-time, would have a lot of things to do. So that's my, it's just a comment, and it's just a personal preference.
And the statement you made, that we need to determine the level of work of the person. Right now, the clerical support is budgeted at 15 hours a week. 15 hours a week are not being spent on Board of Health right now, because both Mr. Zografus and I, when he came on the Board, he became clerk, and he does all our minutes. And between Mr. Zografus and myself, we are able to cover meetings. We've gone to meetings together. I think we saw you at one of them, the one about the.
I think we did too.
The virus down south.
Zika.
Zika virus, and we talked about, a briefing about Ebola. When the, when the general, the doctor.
Di Maria.
Was there, yes. We were all there.
I don't know if I was there, though, but go ahead.
But anyhow.
I said hi to you.
I did, okay, sorry.
But anyhow, so I agree, I agree there needs to be a determination of work. And I don't know if this will come out as full-time or not. But I think, as you said, you made a recommendation, and then you said, "Need to determine." I certainly agree with that, because there would have to be. If the position were created and the level is at the level of support that our administrative assistant gives us, and the workload was there, I can tell you right now, she would not have any time to go, he or she would not have any time to go cover meetings. But again, this is all for the discussion point, all right?
Yeah, right, that's, we put it out there, you know, her responsibilities.
And I didn't mean it in a derogatory way. I literally mean it out of a show of respect for the time that I see that Ms. Grassi and Ms. Brady spend, you know, doing the actual administrative part of the job. So that's why I brought that up, not in a disrespectful way.
I think part of the argument for her to do that, or to do that at least occasionally, is to connect, you know, sort of have some real-life experience with the work of those committees. So I think we can look at it a couple of ways. And that's the reason for participating in training programs, et cetera, is to have a broad understanding of local public health issues. So it wasn't perhaps to go to those meetings every time, but to be able to have the time to do that.
And to be knowledgeable.